All right, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Monday, August 19th Special Meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Ms. Alcantara, are there any public comments, registered public comments tonight? There are no registered public comments. For that reason, the board will go into closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meeting Act. For the reasons listed on our agenda, we'll be back shortly. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are returning from our closed session. A few minutes late, thank y'all for the patience. Board members, are there any motions from closed session to make?
I'd like to make a motion on contract abandonment based on Texas Education Code 21.105. I move, we find that good cause did not exist for Mallory Crizan to abandon her term contract and authorize a superintendent to carry out such actions as necessary to file a written complaint with the State Board of Educator Certification.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Winn is seconding. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Dennison, sorry, sorry. Abstain.
Abstain.
And Ms. Turner, thank you. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that will conclude the special meeting. I feel you, sister. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the August 19th Regular School Board Meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in awe of your love and your forgiveness, your support of us as a community is beyond compare. We are blessed to raise our children in this wonderful community. We're blessed to support our children through the public schools that we have in Montgomery, Texas. I ask a special blessing on our teachers. I ask that you, as you say in Isaiah, Chapter 50, verse 6, that you've given them a tongue of a teacher so that they may know to sustain the weary. Heavenly Father, I hope that you help our teachers see that their words sustain the students they teach every day, today, tomorrow, and for a lifetime. In your Son's holy name, amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here tonight. I'd like to ask Dr. Ruffin, are there any special recognitions?
There are. We've got some celebrations to share this evening, and I'm going to ask Mr. Creo Kaitao to come up and introduce some folks, but we have hired on several different school leaders over the last several months and really want to give them a chance to be recognized, welcome them into the Montgomery ISD home. Some have already been here and some are brand-new to us, and so we just want to give a chance to meet your families also and reiterate the fact that we are a family here, so.
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin, Board of Trustees. Tonight, we have several special recognitions to share with you. First, I'd like to call our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Carrie Fitzpatrick, and Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Chris Summers, who are here to introduce our four new MISD principals for the 24-25 school year. They are Ms. Jewel Tucker, Mrs. Tiffany Matthews, Mrs. Julie Roth, and Dr. Troy Colavo. Will you please join me at the podium?
I am thrilled to introduce Tiffany Matthews, our new principal of Stewart Creek Elementary. Tiffany brings a wealth of experience and a passion for education that will greatly benefit our SCE community. Tiffany's administrative experience spans more than a decade, featuring a range of influential roles across various districts. The roots of her leadership started in Alvin ISD, where she spent seven years as a teacher, department chair, and assistant principal. Following these assignments, she continued her administrative career in Conroe ISD as an assistant principal for two years. Excuse me, Tiffany then moved to Willis ISD, where she made a significant stride on her campus as a principal for three years. After a short stint away from her administrative journey while she prioritized being a mom, most recently she served the Magnolia ISD community as an elementary assistant principal for the previous four years. Her dedication to servant leadership is evident in her commitment to growing both staff and students. Tiffany consistently applies a parent lens to her decision-making process, ensuring that every choice she makes reflects the best interests of students and their families. She asks herself, how would I want this to be handled if it were my child in this situation? Her empathetic approach is the core of her leadership style. Tiffany is supported by her husband, Jared Matthews, and their four children, Reed, a first-year student at Texas State, Callie, a 10th grader at Montgomery High School, McKinley, an 8th grader at Montgomery Junior High School, and Blakely, who is starting out in pre-kindergarten at Stewart Creek Elementary. Please join me in extending a warm welcome to Tiffany Matthews. We look forward to her leadership and the positive impact she will undoubtedly bring to Stewart Creek Elementary.
Esteemed Montgomery ISD Board members, staff, students, and community, I am humbled and excited by the opportunity to lead Stewart Creek Elementary School. Our theme this year is G3, and that's for Goals, Grit, and Growth. We are creating rigorous goals, having grit to accomplish them, and thus growing based on achieving our set goals. We have been busy the past few weeks. We toured our community to learn more about the city of Montgomery. Some of you had an opportunity to take some pictures with some of our staff members. We had fun, friendly competition with musical chairs, three-legged races, and then many other fun games with our staff. Our staff has collaboratively developed our mission and our vision statements, and today we started morning assembly and character education lessons with our students to help foster a school community. And as a staff, we are working towards following a PLC process to improve instruction. We have big goals this year, and I truly believe that we will accomplish them. I want to thank my amazing husband, who's back there with our sleeping pre-K daughter, and my children for their unwavering support. This transition is a family affair for the Matthews as we've recently moved to Montgomery, and all of our school-aged children are joining us in the transition to Montgomery ISD. I am 100% committed to helping our students and staff grow and blaze new trails at Stewart Creek Elementary and in Montgomery ISD. Thank you very much.
Next, I would like to introduce Jewel Tucker, our new principal of Madley Ranch Elementary. Jewel also joins us with a wealth of experience and strong commitment to creating a vibrant and supportive learning environment for staff and students. Jewel's administrative career includes valuable experiences as an assistant principal in both Conroe ISD and Montgomery ISD, where she served for a total of five years. Her extensive background has provided her with the skills and insights necessary to lead and effectively foster a positive school culture. Jewel's leadership style is a thoughtful blend of transformational, collaborative, and transactional approaches. She is dedicated to inspiring and motivating her team, involving them in decision-making, and ensuring that clear, practical strategies are implemented to achieve their school's goals. One of Jewel's core values as a campus leader is her commitment to transparency and feedback. She actively seeks input from me, from staff, students, and parents to help her continuously improve and ensure that everyone's perspectives are contributing to the collective success. Jewel is supported by her family, including her spouse, Jason Tucker, a lieutenant in the Conroe Fire Department, their children, Logan Tucker, a senior at Montgomery High School, Pierce Tucker, a 5th grader at Madley Ranch, and Holly Tucker, a 3rd grader also at Madley Ranch. I look forward to supporting her leadership throughout this school year and many more, and witnessing the positive impact she will bring to the MRE community. Please join me in welcoming Jewel Tucker.
All right, good afternoon, Board. I want to begin by expressing just gratitude to continue to serve at Madley Ranch. I feel like I am in a place that has been both home for me and my family. It's an honor to continue there. I'm excited to work alongside you, our dedicated teachers, staff, students, and the broader community to continue building this legacy. As I step into this role, I'm very mindful of the immense responsibility that comes with, and also the legacy of the people that have led it before me. I'm committed to ensuring that every decision that is made, it's in the best interest of our students and their success. I can firmly say that our staff and myself are united in making sure that we are committed to academic success, that we are committed to fostering a safe and an inclusive environment, and that we are strengthening our community connections. If you know anything about the ranch, it's definitely connected to its community. I'd like to take the time to thank my family, who is busier than I am. You would find them right now at baseball, my 18-year-old shuffling between volleyball, and my husband at a fire station, so you get just me tonight. But they are also here with me, because they're making all those things possible. I am very, very blessed to have my three kids, who, they keep me busy, but I would also say that my two little believe that they too work at Madley Ranch before and after school, and in 3rd grade and 5th grade, they feel like they sit there until they're doing their duties after school. I want to thank you guys again for allowing this opportunity for both me, my family, just to be a part of the community that is the ranch, and we always welcome you to come visit us. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to introduce a couple of new principals that we have at the secondary group, and we'll have, I'm going to begin with Julie Roth, our new principal at Montgomery Junior High. I knew early on, when we selected her, that we got it right, because when I would go over to the high school, I had numerous teachers pull me aside and say, "How dare you steal Julie from us? You're taking her, you're taking her." But, you know, from the early parts of the principal surveys and the talking to the community, the teachers getting the feedback, it was pretty clear early on in the interview process that the values around relationship-building, academics, being tied to the community, really committed long-term to Montgomery ISD are a lot of the qualities that came through with Julie. And so, we're thrilled to have her take leadership at Montgomery Junior High. Julie is married to Lance, and they have one son, Blake, who's a freshman at MHS, so she just missed out by a year getting to be mom and principal of her son. That may be a good or a bad thing, I don't know. But Blake went to Stewart Creek, as well as MJH, and so, like I said, now he's over at MHS, got out of having mom as principal. This is her seventh year as an administrator. She started as an assistant principal at York Junior High in Conroe ISD, then moved over to College Park High School for a couple of years, and then finally moved, as she says, home to Montgomery High School as the associate principal for the last couple of years, and really, really worked hard alongside all of the administrators and teachers the last couple of years, really moving a lot of cheese over at MHS and improving instruction, improving the relationships, and just the functions of things like the collaboration among teachers and teams, and a host of other things. So, we're excited that she's going to bring a lot of that to Montgomery Junior High. She loves the opportunity to get to know the students on her campus. They all have unique stories. She loves watching them learn and grow. She also loves serving and supporting the teachers and the paras on her campus. She wants her staff to know they're supported and gives them opportunities to learn and grow, modeling a growth mindset alongside their students. And again, when I was over there, I started out the first day of school over there, and numerous teachers and some in the front office talked about just how seamless and smooth the first day was. It was one of the best first days they've had at MJH. And if you know, a lot of the teachers at MJH have been there a good, long time, and so that's quite a compliment for Julie. So, this is Julie Roth, Principal, Montgomery Junior High.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I really just want to take a second to thank you. Thank you for trusting me in this role, and it truly is a dream come true. And you don't get to this place without standing on the shoulders of others. And so, while I am committed to all of the things that Dr. Summers talked about, and loving on my people and loving on our kids, that's a direct reflection of the mentorship and the leaders that have poured into me. So, I am so thankful for them. I'm thankful for you all, and thankful for my cheering squad back there. Some of them are going to be mad at me, some of our family that didn't invite to this. But I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't, I learned early on what work ethic is, sorry, watching my dad and my mom, and I learned what servant leadership is, watching them not only serve us, but serving our family. And so, I'm just honored. I'm honored to have this opportunity, and I really thank you. I'm excited to continue the legacy that was started at Montgomery Junior High and excited to work with Troy and build this into the best feeder in the district. The Montgomery Junior High, the feeder.
You're sitting really close to Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Julie. I want to now take a moment to introduce our new principal at the Montgomery High School, Dr. Troy Colavo. And again, Troy was another one, as we did the interviews, you know, when I sought out community and teacher feedback, we got over 80 responses at the junior high, and I think 130-some-odd at the high school. And it was, again, clear that what the community wanted was a leader who would invest in the school, move to the community, and want to make Montgomery a home, and to really value building relationships and authenticity in leadership. And when we talked with Troy during the interview process, and in talking with his references and folks that he worked with, that just came through over and over and over, and it's already been seen, as he hit the ground running and started connecting with his teachers and his teams and making decisions in a very collaborative manner. And so, Troy's done a great job with that. He's married to Haley, who's here with us, and they have two children, there's Stella.
I don't know if you've seen him.
Yep. She's seven, she goes to Lincoln Elementary, and then Owen is three, and she's going to daycare, and she might join us in pre-K next year or whatnot, so looking forward to that. This is Troy's eighth year as an administrator. He was an assistant principal at Glisle Middle School in Cyfair ISD, and then he was also an assistant principal at Cyfair High School, and then he was most recently the associate principal at Cy Springs High School in Cyfair ISD. And so, he enjoys being able to support students and teachers, and as an administrator, he often gets to work with students and staff through an array of different challenges and see them come out on top, and so this is very rewarding for him. And he's super excited here. Even before we fully offered him a position, he spent a weekend up here looking for houses and was just absolutely thrilled with the idea of coming to Montgomery. And so, without further ado, I'll introduce Troy Colavo to you.
Well, how's everybody doing? Probably a little better over there. You know, I guess the best part about being here in this community is the family aspect and family atmosphere, and here they are. So, I appreciate the board, I appreciate Dr. Ruffin, I appreciate the Montgomery ISD community, and getting the opportunity to fully immerse myself in this. You know, I understand the mission and the needs of Montgomery High School. I understand that it needs stability, and my number-one focus is focusing on being a Montgomery Bear, and focusing on the Montgomery High School. Trust, honor, excellence, and that goes daily from the conversations that we've already had on the PA about picking up the trash in the restroom. If you drop it, it's okay, but it's not okay to leave it. I gave that message today over the PA, and I walked in, and I saw a kid picking up trash. And so, that message is already working. The community is amazing. I saw at Meet the Bears how amazing this community can be. They are involved, and they want a leader that's going to be involved and just as committed to the community and the students as they are. They're what's most important to me, and I've heard Dr. Ruffin talk about that aspect too, and seeing his child in that atmosphere and in the school setting, and I understand completely that everybody's child is most important to them. And so, my reminder to staff and my administrators is to take that approach every single day. My task is to create stability, and I want to ensure Montgomery ISD that Montgomery High School will be the Montgomery High School. But that's not to make Lake Creek second, that's to make sure that the community as a whole rises, and we really are the premier district. And so, thank you for everything and for the opportunity.
If I can have the four principals stand on the lower level.
That's so awesome.
Troy, come down on the lower. He's like, "That's a lot."
That's a lot.
Lizzie, I can't see you, so, there we go. You're fine, right where you were, right where you were. Okay, and then Nate, that way, there you go, and Laurie, perfect. One, two, three, one more. Thank you.
Congratulations.
(laughter)
Thank you again, and congratulations to the four new principals from Montgomery ISD. Next, we'd have Lake Creek High School Principal, Mr. Tim Williams, and Associate Band Director, Mr. Matthew Boozer. Mr. Williams will share about an incident at campus this summer, Mr. and Mr. Boozer's quick thinking to help a student.
Come on up, Mr. Boozer. All right, good evening, everybody. So, UIL makes all of our coaches, sponsors, band, choir, cheer, dance, all of our clubs. Every two years, they have to get CPR certified, and they typically groan about it, because it's not an easy task. Our trainers pull them in, and they run them through the loops of the whole thing. It's not just a, "Hey, you was here, let me stamp something for you." This summer, a few weeks back, I was actually in a meeting at district office, and I get a phone call from Mr. Boozer, and I know that band is practicing, and so I know that he's not just calling me to say, "Hey, how's it going?" And he says, "Hey, just FYI," he goes, "we got an ambulance coming up to the school. Just wanted to let you know, we had a kid that choked on something. He's okay now, but ambulance is en route. It was serious for a little bit." And so, was able to get over to the school, and band students, being band students, I think we tried to eat a little bit larger sandwich than probably what we needed to in one bite, but got a, I think it was a peanut butter and jelly sandwich lodged in his throat that was not budging, and not just a "I'm choking" kind of tongue, a turning blue, fixing to pass out. And Mr. Boozer did not hesitate and wrapped him up, and I think probably gave him one kind of medium pump, and then realized it ain't going anywhere, and said, "If it's a rib, it's a rib," and got after him, and was able to dislodge the sandwich. When we got there, ambulance was already on site. Young man's fine, but was in a moment there that he wasn't too sure of. They kept the oxygen to him and kept checking on him, and he had a deep rasp, and he'll chew his food very good going forward, I am sure. But the quick thinking on Mr. Boozer, and he hit it, and he said it the most, he's like, "You know, no one likes doing the training, but that's why we do it." And so, kudos to Mr. Boozer and the quick thinking and stepping up for us and honestly saving a kid's life, because it was serious for a second there. So, we appreciate Mr. Boozer and the job he does, especially the extras.
We're a little heavy on this side, so if I can get one more of you to go over, or two of you, we'll be heavy on that side, it's fine. Right there, Matt, right there, perfect. One, two, three. Thanks.
Finally, please welcome, from Keenan Elementary, Assistant Principal Melissa Freeman, who is joined by Sherri Treadway, Region 6 School Counsel Specialist, and Steve Price, Region 6 Deputy Director of Administrative Services. They will be presenting a special award to Kim Wonderlick from Keenan Elementary, who was one of our MISD Elementary's Counselors of the Year for the 23-24 school year, and has now earned an additional distinction.
So, good evening, Board and Superintendent Ruffin. Welcome to be here, and greetings from Region 6. We're here not to make a special presentation, so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our School Counselor Specialist, Sherri Treadway.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. If you know Kim, you know her heart for developing relationships and providing a positive environment for students makes her especially suited for the school counseling role. She will tell you that her most significant contributions are the little things, which really are the big things, right? The little things that help make a child's day run more smoothly. This can mean coordinating resources for families to keep children fed, clothed, and rested, empowering teachers to help the child manage emotions, or by fostering relationships so that each child feels a sense of connection and belonging. And you mentioned relationships and connection earlier. We all know, I hope we know, that connection is everything. It is relationships, it is safety, it is community, it's all the things we've been talking about tonight. So, thank you for your role in creating connection. I think it's your most... I think it's your most important role. Her goal is to help create a safe and inviting school culture, which is conducive to critical thinking and ultimately learning. Kim's core philosophy is simple. She believes that every person possesses the key to solving their own problems and that it is her responsibility as a school counselor to guide the student to recognize their own personal strengths. This strength-focused approach, along with her nurturing style, enables students to see and unlock their own potential. Kim Wonderlick's dedication is recognized by campus staff and Montgomery ISD. And her support for everyone on her campus is so appreciated. She brings honor to all educators with her work. I am proud to recognize on behalf of Region Six, Kim Wonderlick as the Region Six ESC 2024 Elementary School Counselor of the Year.
We will take one more photo. This is the middle. So, if we can get two of you on that side. There we go. Then everybody will move it. One, two, three. Thanks.
If we could have one final round of applause to everyone recognized tonight. Thank you again. This concludes our special recognitions presentations for this evening and tonight's board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. Greatly appreciated. That is a wonderful segue into our work tonight. And want to say sincere thanks to the Wonderlick family for always being here. August, we've gotten to know you, Kim. Of course, everyone in the district knows and loves Kim and just it's a great recognition. So, again, congratulations. Moving on then to Item Four, Hearing for Citizens Present to Address the Board About Proposed 24 Tax Rate. Are there any registered speakers? There are no registered speakers for Item Four, so we will move to Item Five, Public Comments. Are there any registered public comments? There are no registered public comments, so we will move to Consent Agenda. Board Members, is there anyone that would like to pull an agenda item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, then, can I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rob. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, consent agenda carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, folks, we are into the action items for tonight. Item Seven, A, Consider Approval of Resolution Authorizing the Defeasance of Outstanding Bonds As Presented. We're going to hear from Mr. Lucas Yanda.
Yes, we are. Welcome to Montgomery ISD.
First time in a long time. Hopefully, y'all are doing all right. So, we've got a pair of agenda items. And one to first introduce, Anna Martinez. She's with Hunt and Andrews Kurtz. She's one of the bond council representatives for the firm that helps us work with the Attorney General's Office anytime bonds are involved. And so, two things. First item talks about a fancy word called defeasance, essentially code for chance to actually pay off some of y'all's bonds early. So, this year that y'all are wrapped up, 23, 24, values are higher than we anticipated. And so, the collections that came in, about 1.6 million higher than y'all had in bond expenditures. And so, it's a chance to actually pay off some bonds early. So, there is an order before y'all for consideration that allows us to work with administration to essentially target the bonds that make the most sense to pay off early, save interest to taxpayers in the community, and obviously provide y'all some financial benefit on the INS side, the debt service side. And so, any questions on the first item?
Anyone? All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the resolution authorizing the defense of outstanding bonds as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rob, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Item Seven, B, Consider Approval of Order Authorizing the Issuance of Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds. Series 24, Setting Certain Parameters For the Bonds Authorizing the Price Pricing Officer to Approve the Amount, the Interest Rate, the Price, and Certain Other Procedures. Mr. Yanda.
About a decade ago, back in 2015, there was a number of bonds that were issued. And the way bonds work is typically they have about a nine or 10-year call on them. And so, y'all have bonds that are coming up eligible to be refinanced this fall. And essentially gives us the opportunity to look at what were the interest rates and can we lock in actually something lower. Interest rate on the bonds that we're looking at were 3.86% right now. If interest rates will hold up, knock on some wood, should be right at 3%.And so, great opportunity, obviously, to lower the amount of interest owed on those bonds. This is something that we have some additional bonds coming up a year from now that we'll get to relook at. But the ones we're targeting right now are the ones that are eligible. And so, want to give y'all opportunity to allow for your administration to target those bonds, essentially delegating to them the authority to lock in an interest rate if they're satisfied with what that looks like for the district. Does not extend the debt service life. If anything, we're actually hoping to shorten the debt service life because of the refunding. But otherwise, see if y'all have any questions on the topic.
Board Members, any questions? Mr. Yanda, that makes a lot of great sense. So, thank you very much for that. And if I hear no other questions, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax refunding bonds. Series 2024, Setting Certain Parameters For the Bonds Authorizing the Pricing Officer to Approve the Amount, the Interest Rate, Price, including the terms thereof, authorizing the redemption prior to the maturity of certain outstanding bonds and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto as presented.
Would you do that again for me? I'll second, just because you did that. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. All right. So, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Item Seven, C, Consider Approval of Construction Delivery Method for Bond Projects As Presented.
Mr. Brad Mansfield.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Ruffin, Board of Trustees. We are asking tonight for consideration and action, if approved and agreed upon, to choose the delivery method for our competitive seal proposal, competitive seal proposal for our triplets project. We call it triplets, also package E. It's a renovation project that involves, generally speaking, some paint, some touch-up, some parking lot materials, fencing, roof, administration area, other classroom areas. Lighting has already been done and so, front row has been installed this summer. We've gone out for bid before this in the past and we're hoping that this competitive sealed action or method will bring in some. And the reason why we're asking for competitive seal proposals is we had some pretty good luck the last proposal we went out for. And this, the design phase is done. And so, the benefit of CMR is that they can be a part of the contractor and come on and design it. This is pretty much done. So, we're asking for action to use this method to go out for. We're hoping to put the first advertisement around September 14th.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Any questions? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the construction delivery method for all project, I'm sorry, for bond projects as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you very much. Action Item Seven, well, it's listed as Seven F on our agenda. So, Seven F, Consider Approval for Easement Agreement with City of Montgomery Regarding Redbird Development.
So, in your board packet, you'll see the kind of the outline and the meets and bounds of that. It pretty much goes around Montgomery High School and it'll give access for water for the development that's going to go directly behind Montgomery High School called Redbird. And it's a pretty straightforward easement agreement. It's for a water line. And we are asking for action on that tonight. And certainly, I'll take any questions.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, any questions?
Is this just a water easement or does this give them the opportunity? I mean, what are the constrictions with this easement?
So, in this particular easement, it's for a water line. Sanitary sewer storm are also in this as well. So, if they need to add that, they could.
So, does this, and this is for just the developer or is this for the different utility companies? I mean, who else playing with it? Like, who's at the table?
The City of Montgomery is the only one that's requested it for a water line in this one specifically.
So, does that open up, moving forward, if, say, Mid-South wanted to come place fiber in that neighborhood, that they have the authority to come in as well?
I believe they'd have to work through with us on that.
Okay. So, this doesn't open up the gateways for anybody to come in?
This is just with the City of Montgomery.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mansfield, I know we've talked a lot about water lines in the city before. What does the city water line accomplish? What does this easement accomplish for the city?
So, it accomplishes, I mean, from my perspective, to give the development that's coming back there access to water that the city can provide.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of easement agreement with the City of Montgomery Regarding the Redbird Development As Presented.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wynn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstained. That motion carries. Seven G, Consider Approval of Purchases Over 50,000 For Competitive Seal Proposals For The Transportation Maintenance Purchases, Projects.
All right. So, pretty excited about this project. We went out for competitive seal, had a first advertisement in July and pre-proposed meeting. And we had about 12 plan takers or people show up and took plans from that meeting, contractors that were interested in that job on the 23rd of July. On August 4th, the second advertisement was put out. And then, August 8th, we received some proposals. We had four bids that came in. And in those bids, we had four contractors that put in. We did an evaluation on that. And what we feel like the best value for the district is to use Nash Industries. They were the lowest bid, as you can see on that bid sheet. I had a conversation with them and talked a little bit about the project and why they were a little bit lower than everybody else. They're very confident in that conversation that they can come in under. And Stuart with Huckabee is here too. He's the one that facilitated a lot of the paperwork process of this and also contacted quite a few of these vendors, set up the meeting to give them the information. One of the things we did discuss with the contractor that we will amend in the final bid that is up there tonight, you'll see it's a little bit different than what we had proposed or what their final bid was. We wanted to raise the contingency from 75,000, which was in the bid, the proposal, to 150,000, just for any unforeseen things that may come up. Anytime you go underground, you could run into some stuff. So, we wanted to give a little bit more of that cushion. If we don't spend that money, we'll get it back. So, we wanted to give a little bit of a cushion on that from 75,000 to 150, just in case. We don't anticipate using that. Nash did build one in Channel View, had some change orders mixed in there. And but they feel pretty confident that they can get this done with minimal amount of interruption and change orders and get it done pretty on time. They picked 300 days. They're around about everybody else. We had one that came in at about 2:10. But this one, 300, is what we feel like is probably appropriate. The good news is that they, not that they would be behind, and we want them to be behind, but if they were, it's not dependent on, like, we don't have to have that to open school. We're going to be doing it during the school year. So, transportation will be functioning this entire time while it's being built. It's going to be uncomfortable for them. They got to shift some buses around, deal with the construction. But we feel like 300 days will get it done. So, the amount that we're asking for tonight is $4,681,000 for this project.
Board Members, is there any questions?
Change orders, they're not going to, six months into this project, come back and say, "Hey, we missed it." We're going to, here's a $500,000 change order or a million-dollar change order. And if that does happen, how do we intend to handle that situation?
So, I asked that question. I asked them about that question. And they feel pretty straightforward and confident about that. If they did, we don't have to pay it. And they could walk. I mean, they could. And they could not do this job in that aspect. But they feel confident. And of course, we would have the bond to protect us in that that they sold. But I mean, they feel pretty confident they can get this done in my conversation with them without too many change orders. The only risk is, is when they get underground, when I was talking to them, the amount of leakage from those underground tanks that's in there, that cleanup, which is in the bid, could be a little bit more and it could be absolutely zero. There could be very little cleanup. In Channel View, they mentioned that the one they did there, there was zero cleanup on that. But they just won't know until they get in the ground. That's the biggest thing. That's a fear. It's been in the city's hands and I think they're at the process. Have they approved the permitting for that with, yeah, so, yeah, for the envelope. So, it's through the city and the permitting process on that aspect. And there's not a whole lot of structure involved here. There is one storage building. There's a setup and pre-plumb for a wash plant. And there's an area there that eventually a maintenance building could go on. But there's not a whole lot of things that would initiate a lot of change orders, I don't think. So...
I have a couple of quick questions. One pertaining to the contingency dollars. If and when we get into those dollars, that's going to be something that you would be working? I mean, they're not going to have free rein over our contingency money.
No. I mean, it needs to be, and the way we've done contingency and the way that we felt like that it's worked well here, is that there's things that happen during a project. I use the example of Montgomery High School. Sometimes when you get behind the walls of a bathroom, things happen that are back there that may require more work. That's for the owner's contingency. We ripped up the floor there, found termites in the gym floor. So, those little things are in there. There are some design things that could have been missed or whatever. There are a small portion of that. But we're going to control that pretty heavily. And anytime if it starts getting out of hand, Dr. Ruffin and I will communicate and we'll work together on finding some of those solutions. But we're not going to, I plan on leaving, my goal is to leave this project spending very little of that unless it's absolutely necessary.
So, the other quick question I had is pertaining to the tanks. Once they're removed, if it's determined that they have leaked, is that something that we can loop in our insurance company for helps with the cleanup? And if not, what is the plan with that? Because I know that can grow very quickly.
I don't know about the insurance. I'll let Brendan come up here.
So, with TCEQ, if there is a leak under a tank, they used to say that you would take that soil, displace it elsewhere, and then that's how you would remediate and insert new soil. They no longer do that. What they do at the end of the project, TCEQ will have us do some testing of the soil and they'll put probes in the ground. And if there is leakage, they just monitor the amount of leakage over time to make sure that it's going down and not going up, meaning you would have left something in the ground, whether that be an underground pipe that's continuing to drain or that it's spreading beyond a certain parameter that they're comfortable with. So...
How do they plan to do that, though? If we extract the tank and then backfill the hole and then pour parking lot back down, how are they going to monitor that situation?
They have sensors. So, the one that he was referencing in Channel View, actually, I worked on that project. And they put probes in before you put the concrete down and they'll check. Then they determine a perimeter. And it's about $5,000 a year to monitor that soil. So, there was a five-year agreement that had to be put in place to say, "Over five years, we'll watch and make sure it's not going outside the perimeter that they established."
So, they'll determine once the testing is complete, how many years they're going to need?
Yes, if it's necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I would like to add one thing to that too, just kind of as a contingency. As they say, they cut out at the end of the project, check the soil. If it's limited to a very small amount of soil, we do have a contingency on a cost per square yard basis to remove the soil that's already built into the contract. So, we would know ahead of time if you wanted to spend that out of your contingency. I would like to add one thing to that too, just kind of as a contingency. As they say, they cut out at the end of the project, check the soil. If it's limited to a very small amount of soil, we do have a contingency on a cost per square yard basis to remove the soil that's already built into the contract, so we would know ahead of time if you wanted to spend that out of your contingency funds, how much they would give you.
Thank you.
So, there's no chance of like a superfund site out of this at all, right? A superfund site, we're not worried about that? No, okay. And what's a start date?
If everything goes right, let me look at the calendar here. September, what did you, the second, yeah, September second.
Mr. Mansfield, all the questions that my colleagues up here have been asking, you believe we're doing everything right by the environment with this build, everything square?
Well, I think the TCEQ is going to make sure.
I just want it on the record.
Yeah.
Just want that on the record, okay?
I don't know what was in those tanks or what's been leaking, so I, I mean, but I think whatever we end up doing, we're going to make it right, what's underneath there.
Gotcha.
And put them above ground.
All right, board members, any other questions? Then, is there a motion on item seven G?
I move that we approve purchases over fifty thousand dollars for the competitive sealed proposals for the transportation and maintenance projects.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Winn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, that carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next up are a string of fairly substantial things that we, two of them we do every year, one of them we do every once in a blue moon. And the first one would be item seven H, adopting and setting an order of resolution for the twenty-four ad valorem tax rate for debt service. Mr. Davidson?
Good evening. Item seven H establishes the district's debt service tax rate. This portion of the rate is levied in order to make our bond payments. The district is pleased to propose a rate that does not increase the debt service rate from the prior year. If you remember when, when the district held the bond election in twenty-twenty-two, we're anticipating a seven-tenths of one cent increase on the debt service rate and we haven't had to do that. We've held the rate the same prior to that bond election. Based on current calculations, it won't be necessary this year and hopefully not in the future. We're confident we can satisfy this year's debt payments with the thirty-seven point forty-three cent rate that was adopted last year. Are there any questions on the debt service rate?
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions on debt service? Mr. Davidson, you want to do these sequentially or all at once?
It makes no difference to me.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do them sequentially if y'all are okay with that. Ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion for item seven H?
I move that the twenty-twenty-four ad valorem tax rate for debt service be adopted and set by order resolution at point three-seven-four-three per one hundred dollars.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that motion carries. We're going to move over to the maintenance and operations side of the house. Mr. Davidson, what you got?
This portion of the rate is used for the general operating fund of the district. We use it for all salaries and bills and everything that, that is required to run a school district. The rate was at eighty-eight point five-seven cents in the twenty-one-twenty-two year. The twenty-two-twenty-three MNO rate was eighty-five point four cents. And the twenty-three-twenty-four year, we dropped the rate eighteen cents to sixty-seven point four-four. For the twenty-four-twenty-five year, we're proposing a rate of seventy-one point sixty-nine cents. This is an increase of four point two-five cents from the twenty-three-twenty-four rate. Does anybody have any questions on that one?
I bet there's a few questions. Any, anybody have questions on maintenance and operations? All right, hearing none, then I'll go ahead and call for a motion on maintenance and operations, item seven, aye.
I move that the twenty-twenty-four ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operations be adopted and set by order or resolution at point seven-one-six-nine per one hundred dollars. I further move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one point zero-nine-one-two per one hundred dollars, which is effectively a nine point five-one percent increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. I'm not going to ask you to read that again either, so. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries. All right, and last but not least for action items tonight, seven J, consider approval of an order calling for an election to ratify school district taxes pursuant to section two-six dot eight of the property code as presented. Dr. Ruffin?
So, we are at a point now where the tax rate that was just adopted at seventy-one-sixty-nine, the MNO tax rate at seventy-one-sixty-nine per one hundred dollar value, then ultimately triggers a tax rate election that must be called in order to have voters weigh in on that tax rate. And so, what the board has effectively done with the previous action item is given a, a tax rate that exceeds what you are legally liable to call and just stamp off on. And so, now the action item on the table is to then call for an order of an election to happen this November, in which our stakeholders can go and cast their vote to approve or disapprove that tax rate.
Awesome. Board members, any questions or comments?
So, so I, for a living, teach and train teachers. And so, I see teachers going out all over the state, but mostly I see what other districts are doing to recruit those high-quality teachers that, that we're training. MISD, one of the reasons I live here, we check so many boxes for so many of the things we're already doing with the climate, the culture within the district, which is great. However, many of these districts are recruiting teachers before they even graduate. Districts in our area are having giant recruiting events, taking student teachers on buses to, to tour their campuses, paying student teachers to student teach, so they're getting a stipend to just come to their districts and, and student teach. And it, what I've learned is it's an incredible advantage that these other districts have that allows them to recruit the teachers, university to their district, just straight down the pipeline. And that's not something that we're able to do right now. In a four-million-dollar deficit, you know, we can't implement these strategies and we're just going to grow, so our ability to recruit new teachers into our district is extremely important and something we really need to prioritize. This Prop A, the revenues from it would provide these additional resources, not only to retain our amazing teachers and staff that we already have, because that's very important, but also through being able to recruit better teachers. We could raise salaries, we could do these things that are recruiting these amazing teachers straight into our, into our district. You know, we want to be premier. We are premier. We want to stay premier and this, this proposition A gives us some of those resources to, to really be competitive with what I'm seeing happening across the state.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. Board members, I've made a little faux pas, if you don't mind, real quickly, I'd like to go ahead and lay on the table the motion that we're discussing, if y'all don't mind, and then we'll go through comments. That was my fault, ladies and gentlemen, and I apologize about that. So, is there a motion for item seven J?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve calling for a voter-approved tax rate election to be held on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. A further move to authorize the district administration to take any and all steps necessary to effectuate this action.
All right, thank you, Mr. Winn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rob, thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, after the eloquent Ms. Ivy over there, I apologize.
I've got more to say, no.
You've got more to say, take it away, Ms. Ivy. Or Mr. Rob?
Well, so I have a few notes. I have been blessed over the years to own and operate successful businesses. What I think a lot of people don't understand about school district finances or lack thereof sometimes, is that imagine running a business where you only have actual control of a fraction of your expenditures and your revenues. That's what we face in public education with MISD. And we just completed an efficiency audit, which is triggered with this whole, what am I trying to say?
Process.
Process, thank you. And I think it's very important to discuss, the audit compares us to ten like districts, our peer districts, which I don't know if we determine those or if the state does, but.
Yeah, we, we, the, the firm sets those depending on size and tax rate and different demographical variables.
So, we, we collectively, some of ours, our, our peer districts are like districts that were included in this are College Station, Bernie, Willis and Friendswood and several others. Here's some facts from the audit that were pretty alarming and, and, and don't seem to be getting any better. We receive sixteen hundred dollars less per student than our peer districts and almost twenty-eight hundred dollars less than the state average. We also spend almost one thousand dollars less per student than our peer districts and almost two thousand dollars less than the state average. We spend less in areas like instruction, instructional leadership, campus leadership and general administration cost than both our peer districts and the state average. Those two points alone provide the evidence of how lean we have been committed to operating. We do not, we do not overspend in any areas. In fact, we're spending significantly less per student compared to our peers, our peer districts. This is, so I'm, I'm going on year three right now with the board and this seems to be something that every single year that we have this conversation, which it's a reoccurring conversation because the problem's not fixed. But the only thing that does change year after year is the numbers that we're talking. So, every time, you know, two years ago, it may have been fourteen hundred dollars less per student. And every year that passes, that number gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So, our problem is growing, not getting better. So, that's, that's, that's one of the biggest reasons. We, we, you know, there's no other way to fix it. We've, we've chopped everywhere we can chop without the expense of personnel and staff and there's no more money to cut. So, here we are.
Ms. Turner?
I want to start by saying I'm very proud of this board and the collaborative effort that it has been for us to get to the point we're at tonight. It has taken lots of time, lots of discussion, lots of thought to get to where we are tonight and it's not even just been in the last couple of months, it's been the last couple of years. So, thank you for being collaborative to all of you other board members. Our business in this district is people. We know that. Our people are what make this district special, that we value them and we want to keep them. They're what make this district premier. A few years ago, we worked on our strategic plan and that plan got us all moving forward in the same direction on our pathway to premier. The truth is, right now, we do not have the revenues to continue on that path, on that path where we can reach those goals that were set forth in that strategic plan. After numerous meetings and extensive discussion with Dr. Ruffin, I believe for sure that this is the best and this is what we're doing tonight, making this decision is in the best interest of students and staff across this entire district.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Winn?
It's important to know that this has not been a six or an eighth month decision. It has been a topic of conversation for almost two years now. We're at the point where we have exhausted all of our options to protect our people and our programs within MISD. Because of the public school funding formulas, MISD has very little control over the revenues we receive. It is important to control what you can control and one of those options still on the table is to increase our funding, is to allow our community to weigh in on this issue. Montgomery ISD has never called for a tax rate and here's why we're at the point where we must call for this election. Simply put it, we are paying twenty-twenty-four bills with twenty-nineteen expenditures. Meaning, the basic allotment, the money we receive from the state per student, has not increased from two thousand and nineteen. Listen to this. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is the amount the district's insurance premiums for auto liability and property have increased since two thousand and nineteen. We are supposed to cover an additional three-quarters of a million dollars in insurance expenditures alone if we haven't increased revenues at all. I also think it is important to know that we could have called for this election to access up to twelve additional pennies, but as we have always been committed, we will only go to our community and ask what we believe is the minimum to provide the financial resources to continue to be the premier district we are.
Thank you, Mr. Winn. Mr. Cameron?
When evaluating the impact of Prop A on MISD, I've been committed to a thorough review of all the facts to ensure that we have exhausted all of our efforts to reduce our deficit. It is clear to me that the only options, that the only options left would have a drastic impact on our student programs and our people of Montgomery. I think it is important that our community knows that this is not a bond election. The bond passed in May of two thousand and twenty-two allowed the district to fund much-needed construction, including building Creekside Elementary and the new Ag, Science and CTE Center. We've been able to continue to meet the facility needs of our students and community because our stakeholders identified that need, resonated with the impact and ultimately supported the two thousand and twenty-two bond election. Bond funds can only be spent on construction and other capital improvement projects. We cannot use any of those funds to assist with our funding deficit on the maintenance and operations side of our budget. Therefore, as it has been said, we are left with no other choice than to allow our stakeholders the opportunity to become educated on Prop A, understand the impact and vote in November.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Mr. Dennison?
I got on the board in two thousand and twenty and the basic allotment from the state has not changed at all during my time here. We've tried to do all that we could with the funding shortages we've seen and we are very proud of our district despite of the funding gap. This decision for me to move forward on this has been one of the hardest ones I've had to make. I'm upset with our state who failed us last year to fund our public school. To be clear, it's not everyone in Austin that put us here. You'll need to do your research to see how everyone voted on the last bill. Their actions put MISD in the position to move forward. We have to think of our students, staff and their families. MISD and the community are, are a family and families take care of each other. I've spent over thirty-one years in law enforcement and I care about the safety and security of our campuses. This shows over my tenure here on the board. By moving forward Prop A, it would provide us the ability to maintain the level of safety and security we provide. It would also help us retain and recruit the best officers in MISD. I am voting on this to move forward to the voters to decide if it's time for us to take care of our family.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. And ladies and gentlemen, I'll make a few comments, much of which echo what my colleagues on the board, particularly Ms. Turner. I too am proud of this board. For two years, ladies and gentlemen, we have been grappling with this decision to call for this vote. In my six years on this board, I can, I can purposefully and honestly, directly, completely, whatever adjective you want to put on there, say, this is the most prepared recommendation that Dr. Ruffin or anyone in the administration has brought to us. It's thoroughly thought through. Formulas have been run, rerun, checked. Mr. Davidson has pulled his hair out every, every other day that he has a board workshop with us to just double-check the numbers, make sure that we are right-sized on this, that we're in the right bubble. And I plan to, ladies and gentlemen, my vote, I plan to cast in favor of calling for a, the election here in November. My reasons for doing that are first and foremost, Dr. Ruffin and Mr. Davidson, y'all have done two things. In fact, really, everybody in the district has done one thing, that is tighten our belt. Guys, we're not living frivolously. If anyone should hear these words, we're not living beyond our means anymore. We have tightened our belt to the point that we, we need to, to consider all of these options. Secondly, as I said earlier, they, they've really put forward a real evidence-based decision and recommendation for us. The, the choice before the board tonight is, as we set the prior, in the prior two action items, we did set the rate, but the choice tonight with this action item really is about letting the community decide what they want to see in their school district. And for my, from my viewpoint, you can't get any more grassroots and democratic than that. And so, ladies and gentlemen, as Mr. Rob has said, we are way, we are underfunded, twenty-eight hundred dollars less than the state average per student. We spend less though, and so we are equalized on that, on that, that side of it. We've done everything we can do. In many ways, you'll hear people say that the administration is where we spend a lot of money. Folks, that's not true either. We spend two hundred and sixty dollars less per student on our administrative positions. And so, tonight, when I cast this vote, I'm going to look at things like the fact that we have an administrator over here sitting to our left and we fill out our, our PMS report, who has to have her, her FTE line cut up five or six different ways because she's literally doing the job of five or six different people in other school districts. I'm going to be thinking about the teachers that come to me and say, I really love working in Montgomery. But as Ms. Ivy has said tonight, it's getting really tough, really tough to recruit them and keep them here. And so, we've dug into the numbers, we're really thorough with it. And so, we've dug into the numbers, we're really thorough with this. I feel confident that if there are no other questions, or Dr. Ruffin, any comments you wanna make?
Yes, please, thank you. First of all, I hope that the common theme has been reiterated amongst the trustees. One, this is not an easy decision to make in the sense of what, what seems like a, an immediate solution that lies in front of us comes with the burden and the weight of knowing that that result is gonna be going to ask our taxpayers to understand and realize the situation that we're in and then to vote however they feel accordingly. So, Prop A is estimated to generate about five and a half million dollars of revenue this fiscal year. We're in over a four million dollar deficit. So, we, we talk about our people and our programs, and we've done things as, as best we can to protect them. We love our people, it's what makes this school district what it is. Good communities, solid, successful, thriving communities go hand in hand with thriving, successful school districts. And, and I wanna reiterate a few things that the funding challenges we face are not solely from the lack of additional funding and the basic allotment from the state. That's a problem, don't get me wrong, but you couple that with inflation, you couple that with unfunded mandates, you couple that with rising special ed costs, that's what is crippling. And there's a opportunity to recognize the situation that we're in, and Mr. Robb alluded to it. It's really difficult to comprehend the, the revenues expenditure side from a business standpoint, because hey, you wanna, you wanna have more revenue, work harder, right? Like, increase your, your, lower your overhead, well, us lowering our overhead means people. And, and that's what we've been committed to not doing. I wanna, I wanna, I hope that those here tonight, and if you watch later, you, you pick up on some of these numbers and facts that have been stated, because they are facts. The, the fact of how we compare to our peer districts in spending and revenue and administrative costs and instructional costs, those are facts. House Bill Three came out last year, and it requires us to have an armed officer on every campus. That is a great law. Montgomery I S D did it a long time ago, way before it was a law. That is a good law to have on the books for school districts in Texas. The problem is it's an unfunded mandate. Because we're now legally obligated to do it, our M I S D payroll for our police department is over a million dollars, and we get less than a quarter of a million from the state, we get two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the state as a safety and security allotment that's supposed to cover us implementing a new law to put an armed officer on every campus. That doesn't work, that, that, that's a, that's a pace of play that we cannot keep up, and we don't have the financial resources to continuing facing these, these unfunded mandates. So, over the next several months, our, our stakeholders, our community, we're gonna be working very hard to connect with you and to educate those that may not have a direct interaction with the school district. Some of you here tonight might have kids with us or grandkids with us. You see the work happening in the classrooms, you see the impact happening by our educators and our bus drivers and everyone else. But we've got a large community that may not be directly connected and may not understand the challenge we face financially. So, so you'll see us places, you'll see us in the mail, you'll see us on an ad to make sure that you understand what Prop A is and what Prop A isn't. It's not our job to convince voters how to vote, it's just our job to educate the voters to go vote. The, 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 the impact on the tax side of things for a, for a home of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Prop A would be about eight dollars, eight dollars and eighty-five cents, less than nine dollars a month. It's important to know that our, our senior citizens that are sixty-five and older that have a home state exemption, there is no tax impact at all, their taxes do not go up one bit because of Prop A. I wanna thank our trustees. I wanna think, honestly, folks, you have to understand, the conversations that we've had about this have been pushing back on the idea, because that's, that's allowed us to gain a deeper understanding and really flesh out what it truly means to be calling this election in November. And it's made us really dive into the situation that we're in. And so, I've got an opportunity, we've got an opportunity. Hopefully, those that, that understand Montgomery I S D and the family that we are see it also as an opportunity to be engaged in the work moving forward and helping us educate our, our stakeholders about the facts regarding Prop A.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, board members, any other questions or comments?
I mean, I think it's important to note, you know, that we, over the past, at least since I've been on the board, so since twenty-two, have, we, we've had a legislative committee that has worked tirelessly with our local legislators to come up with something, which they were able to do. Representative Metcalf got two bills authored and passed that were, they, they were dead in the Senate. So we've got, we have people that are, that are trying to help us fix this problem. And, and, you know, those folks are just as frustrated. And so, you know, we're, we're working alongside our legislators to, to continue to fix this moving forward, you know, for a permanent effect. So, those guys have, have worked with us, and I think it's, it's noteworthy, so.
Yeah, Mr. Robb, thank you for saying that, I wanna echo something that we've heard in this very building at times from our elected officials that say that we have not done everything locally to correct our challenges, and we need to take measures such as this to address those local issues. You know, they, they've also said things like, you know, the recent compression that they've had us do last year, eighteen cents, was, it had some unintended consequences on districts like Montgomery that have always run a little bit more financially conservative and lean. And so those unintended consequences are best corrected by the people. And that's what we're here to do tonight, is to allow the people the chance to tell us what they think for their tax rate for their schools. As Dr. Ruffin said earlier, a monthly increase of a dollar and eighty-five cents on the, on the average home, correct?
Eighty-five, eighty-five.
I told you I was gonna mess the dollars up. Eight dollars eighty-five cents on the, on the average home in Montgomery. And so I, I think, you know, those are things that the community will need to take into effect, and I encourage everyone to get educated and get ready to vote. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call the question on the motion and the second that have been laid on the table, if there are no other questions or comments. All right. The motion is the, to approve the calling of a voter-approved tax rate election to be held November 5th, twenty-four, and further move to authorize the district administration to take any and all steps necessary to effectuate this action made by Mr. Nguyen and seconded by Mr. Robb, I believe, correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, ladies and gentlemen, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for the years of hard work and dedication from everybody up here, everybody out there in our community. We'll see you in November. All right, information items, got a little bit more work to do. Information item eight A, report on cooperative purchasing and management fees. Mr. Davidson?
Yes, sir.
You're having a lot of fun tonight.
Yeah, it's time to get to work now. Every year, the district is required, required to report on the purchasing cooperatives, of which we are a member. And these cooperatives ensure that we receive fair pricing and are in compliance with the Texas purchasing laws. And in your packet, you'll see a list of those cooperatives. We pay a nominal fee to three of those cooperatives, a hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred dollars, and a hundred dollars, and the others, there is no fee. And are there any questions on those?
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Davidson, appreciate that. Information item eight B, employee handbooks.
So the employee handbooks, they're in your board book, they're also posted on our website. It's, it's always outward-facing, there's no substantive changes in there whatsoever. Most of the time, you'll see those after a legislative session, but there's nothing in there that is any different than it ever has been. So, and you've had those to, to review and look over, like I said, it's, it's on our website.
And when Dr. Ruffin says no substantive changes, most of the things really are dates. And, you know.
Dates, titles.
Titles, people's names, things of that nature, so. All right, ladies and gentlemen, with no other additional information items or action items, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, the time is seven twenty-two.